Oh, sorry Steve. I call the regular meeting of the City Commission Tuesday, or I'm sorry, Monday, June 10th, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, has the role been taken?
It has. All are present tonight. I would state that the City Attorney, Mike Omer, is not here tonight, so Laura Genovich is sitting in, in his stead.
Thank you. Next, the Proclamations and Presentations, and Manager Ridley will start us off.
Yes, as we've indicated to you, we're in the season of life where we have a number of our city employees who are eligible to retire, and I think an analysis we did last year showed that we have 30 percent of our employees who are actually eligible to retire over the next couple of years. So these last couple of months, a few of those retirements have actually occurred, and so our Human Resources Department and many of the individual departments have been busy hiring. So we saved up our latest group of hires to bring to you all this evening. So we have six new employees that we're going to introduce to you this evening, and we have various departments that are doing those introductions. So we're going to do five of them as a group to come up together, and then we'll do the police officer on his own because he actually has to be sworn in by Paul tonight, so we'll do his separately. So with that, I'll turn it over to John to do the first introduction and have Angie come up.
I'd like to introduce to you Angie McCann. She's hired as a part-time office professional. She started on April 15th, working 20 hours a week. Before coming to the city to this job, Angie worked for Goodman Networks in several positions over nine years, most recently as Field Service Coordinator. Before working for Goodman, Angie spent 10 years working for the city of Mount Pleasant and Division of Public Works. We're glad to have Angie back. She brings a wealth of experience, as well as specific DPW experience.
Hi, I'd like to introduce to you tonight Rhonda Haynes from, she comes to us from Rosewood Development, and Leigh Anne Alice, who comes to us from Paula Fisher and Tony Systems Law Office. And together, they have a combined customer service and work, customer work, or work experience of 45 years. So needless to say, we are over the moon and happy to welcome them to the Treasurers Team.
Welcome.
So due to the retirement of Diane Adams in the Assessing Department, the Assessor and Clerk's offices are pleased to announce the hiring of a new team member, Amanda Crits. She started with the city on Monday, May 20th, and she's a graduate of Shepherd High School and Central Michigan University. She comes to us from the Reserve Apartments in Isabella County, I Ride. And Amanda's customer service skills, her work ethic, all of her drive will be a great asset to the city, and we look forward to many years of her working with us.
The Peak Program is going to be losing unfortunately Cheryl Palman, who's been with the program since its inception in 2001. Although it's tough to lose Cheryl, we're very excited to have Jamie Coffey onboard with us as our new Peak Professional, or Office Professional One. When I asked Jamie originally where she was from, she kind of gave me a blank stare. She comes to us by way of the Army where her husband is a recruiter, so she's been everywhere. She's kind of from all over the place, but most recently, her hometown is Junction City, Kansas. Very excited to have Jamie onboard, strong personality, great stuff, customer service skills, and she's going to do a great job with the Peak Program. We're very excited to have her on.
Hello. For people out in the public, I'm Paul Loria, Director of Public Safety. I'm here to announce the hiring of our newest officer due to the retirement of Sergeant Sarah Cuthbertson. We hired Joshua Loudens Slogger. Joshua comes to us from the Clare County Sheriff's Department, where he served a total of six years, two as a Corrections Officer, four as a Road Patrol Deputy. Previous to that, he served in the United States Marine Corps for five years. He grew up in Farwell, went to Farwell High School, and in his spare time, he enjoys fishing and hunting. As you can probably tell, we're very excited to have him. The city as an organization and for the community know that Josh will serve all of us well with honor, integrity, and dedication. And I'd like to swear him in now, if you could go in front here. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, please. I, Joshua Loudens Slogger, do solemnly swear
I, Joshua Loudens Slogger, do solemnly swear
that I'll support, defend, and uphold the Constitution of the United States
I will support, defend, and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
the laws of the State of Michigan and
The laws of the State of Michigan.
in the ordinances of the City of Mount Pleasant.
In the ordinances of the City of Mount Pleasant.
Joshua, congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Welcome, everybody, and thank you for your service to the city. Next, we have a presentation by McKenna &amp; Associates on the 2050 Master Plan.
I should indicate that Paul's presentation for you this evening is going to be a little bit lengthier than our typical presentations are because of the importance of the topic, and he's going to kind of give you a recap of where we are in the Master Plan and what's ahead. And after he has done that presentation, he will entertain any questions that the seven of you may have for him.
Great. Good evening, Commissioner. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. I, you know, we have a lot to cover. I'm going to, I might move a little quickly, but there is going to be questions, so if there's anything you'd like to me to address, I'm happy to answer questions afterwards. So I'd like to cover a little bit about why a Master Plan is important. I'm here to share, not a comprehensive report of our public engagement results, but some of the high points, share with you a little about of the preliminary recommendations, and talk about the next steps for the Master Plan. So why do we Master Plan? The most important thing about a community's Master Plan is that it establishes a shared vision. It's, it's the city's plan, it's the city's guiding policy document, and it's really a culmination of all of the different policy and planning efforts that many of your city departments and commissions work towards. On last Thursday, I was able to spend time presenting and discussing the Master Plan process with the DDA, with the Parks Commission, and also with Planning Commission, and I presented kind of more detailed subject matter presentations and got feedbacks with each of them, and I'm here tonight to kind of cover the high points with the City Commission. But really, it's a process where we seek to get not only feedback from the dedicated staff and elected and appointed officials at the city, but we work really hard to outreach and hear from residents, as well as business owners. And the collaboration really is key to what creates a document that people can endorse, and that will contain recommendations that people in the community feel inspired to work on. The Master Planning Process is required by the state to be updated every five years. So while we look to have a really future vision with, looking towards 2050 with a 30-year planning horizon, we're really trying to set the course for the city over the next five years, knowing that it's an iterative process and it will need to be updated to continually have items for the city to work on. The planning process is really geared towards first starting with analysis, understanding the demographic shifts, understanding what the community desires are, but using those to affirm and establish goal areas and objectives, which become the basis for the city's work plans and policies. Around those items, we develop lists, we develop alternatives really for different policy items, and then by working on and getting feedback on those alternatives, we develop a certain consensus for what the recommendations will be based around. And only after that process do we go down the adoption process, which requires a 63-day public period and recommendations for the Master Plan by the Planning Commission and adoption by the City Commission. This is also a parks planning process, which requires a recommendation of the Parks Commission and adoption by City Commission. So when the final document is prepared and has been noticed and public hearings and public comment periods have been completed, it will still have to be endorsed and reviewed by the city's main policymaking and policy-forming bodies. And then, of course, the important thing about this graphic is that, as I said, Master Planning is an iterative process, so really, what we're trying to do is to set the course for the next five years, knowing that the city has to continually look at the Master Plan and update it. One of the unique things about the process we're undertaking now, it's that it's driven by the charrette process. And it's great to see so many people who participated in our charrette. It's great to see so many people on Thursday as well that were informed about the Master Planning Process. But one of the wonderful things about the charrette process is that we're able to really do an intense period of activities where we do a series of focus groups, series of interviews, a number of public meetings, and it's designed to get the feedback of this process completed in the five days, so then we can start actually working on drafting materials and bring more substantive plan to the city for adoption. And the reason why charrettes work so well and why the city elected to do this process is that it's based in feedback loops. So we started by presenting the research, the analysis. We asked residents, did we get this right, or is this research consistent with what you've experienced as a resident or a business owner here? Then we use that to develop a series of candidate recommendations and alternatives. We get feedback on those alternatives. What do we think about these alternatives? And then develop those into a more finalized list of preferred concepts for different themes. And that's really what we went through, and we presented a lot of these preliminary themes tonight, but what we have additionally is the results of some of the public engagement. So in addition to the charrette, we also wanted to make sure that we did outreach to people who couldn't attend in person, and what we do is kind of the same program online as we do in-person. So we had online surveys about goals and objectives, about the parks plan, about what people's vision was for the community, and about what they wanted and expected for future development and policies. And I'm pleased to report that we received more than 500 responses to these online surveys. And I was also pretty excited that a lot of what we heard online was similar and of the same nature to the things we heard in person, which is, means we were getting a good representation of what's important to people, both in our in-person meetings and online. In person, when we asked people about their vision for the future, they said they really endorsed the city's efforts with the "Meet Here" branding effort to establish Mount Pleasant as a regional destination, a place that was important throughout the state. We heard consistently about the importance of the park system and how the park system was really the backbone to many other important strategies that the city was undertaking for housing, economic development, redevelopment. And we heard, of course, that having good jobs, entertainment, making it a walkable city, these themes were talked about almost at every session we did. And they were affirmed online. For the 160 responses we got online about people individually talking about their vision for Mount Pleasant's future, we broke those down into really five theme areas. Downtown business attraction and economic development, which included Mission Street, parks and recreation, improving transportation streets and traffics, traffic processing, improving communities' sustainability and quality of life, and increasing diversity and attracting residents. Just one example of the types of things, and of course, we had 160 responses, so we have people saying in their own words what they want for the future of Mount Pleasant, but this one I really liked. "Mount Pleasant will have a small-town atmosphere with cultural entertainments and sports opportunities, usually associated with bigger cities. A city that has multiple, that offers multiple generations, safe, appealing neighborhoods, excellent public services, opportunities for economic development and growth that meets the needs of the future." There are lots of responses that reflect these types of aspirations, and we're really pleased with the responses that we got. Again, I mentioned this is also, a parks plan is being undertaken, and from the parks feedback, we really got a lot of people talking about the river, a lot of people talking about trails and connectivity, and of course, regional connections is also, and also connections to the parks on the east side of the city. We did get validation and feedback from residents on five overall arching themes for the community's goals, and these key objectives were prioritized by residents in-person, online, and I was really happy to see that many of the priority resident, objectives that people identified at the charrette were also identified in the online survey. So the preliminary recommendations, again, we looked at three sites to look at kind of what some model places for future development. We looked at the Mission Street corridor and really asked the question of, as the zoning ordinance is implemented on Mission Street, what types of changes have to be made on the corridor to support transportation system and a land use system that can create the type of quality of life that the zoning ordinance envisions? And we started to look at, since the charrette, if you were to build out the zoning ordinance, what that might look like. And this represents a good amount of redevelopment. We do have, we have done research on the various housing studies that have been done. There's a housing target market analysis to inform. We've done some retail analysis, and there are some other retail analysis for us to look at. So what we'll be looking to do is establish five- and 10-year planning horizons for the number of square footage and units of housing that could potentially be realized in the city. But this, these images here do kind of transfer what the vision would be for creating a multimodal boulevard, retrofitting a multimodal boulevard on Mission Street. And I would just say really quickly, one of the exciting things about the charrette was that we got a lot of good feedback from CMU's Planning Department, as well as met with MDOT engineers, and we had a good conversation with MDOT engineers today. So we'll continue to look at and really examine the feasibility and what types of information that will be needed to implement this vision. We did look at the Town Center site, and I think one of the discoveries we made at the charrette about the Town Center site is that really what was needed was more public space, and a space downtown to have public gatherings, the importance of connecting this space to Island Park, and as well as if there were new buildings in this area that they should highlight and complement the existing Riverview Apartments. We did look at Pickard Street. Pickard Street, one of the things that came up is that it could be a place to create a new gateway to downtown, and that really people were happy with the existing opportunities for the industrial development on the north side, as well as the neighborhood developments on the south side, but that Pickard had an, was an opportunity to create that gateway and bridge those two areas. So some of the things that arose while we were looking at the transportation system, a modern boulevard system on Mission Street, potentially rerouting M20 north to align with Pickard Street east-west on the north side of the city, creating local bikeway connectors around the city to help link some of the key public spaces and parks, and then designing a system that would support the civic center of, you know, downtown, as well as CMU and a new expanded and redeveloped Mission Street. And this is an example of what that multimodal boulevard might look like, noting that there are zero-lot line buildings, as well as on-street parking, which is really needed to support the retail environment that is envisioned for Mission Street. For the park system, we know we've inventoried Mount Pleasant's beautiful park system, and working on kind of re-establishing the goals for the park system, the understanding how it relates to the natural system, and of course, Mount Pleasant's park system's place within the regional recreation system as well. We have looked at future land use. One of the biggest things that a Master Plan does is it establishes a future land use plan for the city. And of course, you have a new zoning map that has been done since your last future land use map, so we really had to start from scratch. And I'll describe for you a little bit about how this future land use map was made. I was really excited that during the charrette, we were able to do some serious study on future land use and some collaboration, but what we did was we had about a, it was almost like an entire morning. We started at 9:00 a.m. I think we finished after lunch, or just in time for lunch. But we had everybody that was participating actually draw, well, first, we talked about what the categories should be, so these categories you see were kind of created in a group, in a group discussion to decide which categories we wanted to work on, and how they would align with the zoning ordinance categories. And then each individual that was there drew their own future land use map. So everybody kind of thought about the city and noted on their own map where they thought the district should be. After that, we split into two groups, and each group was charged with creating one future land use map out of everybody's ideas, which, you know, after that, we wound up with two different maps, but both were a comprehensive plan for the future land use on the city. And then what we did was we had a discussion about what the differences were in those maps, and really, it was a matter of different interpretations on what the district meant. So we were able then to create this future land use map that will represent everyone's understanding that participated on how to implement land use policy for the city. So that's exciting, and really, I think that's probably the most important map in your Master Plan. So next steps. The charrette process really is designed to bring us directly into drafting the plan. This is really the 30 percent plan, which means we've got about 30 percent of the recommendations that I'm presenting tonight. What I was looking to do last Thursday and tonight is kind of validate where we're at, so that I can give my team the go-ahead to basically draft a narrative around that, and that narrative would be presented back to the DDA, the Planning Commission, Parks Commission, and the City Commission for more comment and more feedback prior to making the recommendation to start the official adoption process, which, as I mentioned before, requires 63-day public hearing, or public notice and public hearings. So I'm happy to take questions. I appreciate you giving me this much time. I hope that I stayed within my allotted time limit, and I'd love to hear from the Commission.
Thank you very much, Paul. Do we have any questions for Paul while he's here? Commissioner Ling?
I noticed you mentioned that you had met with the MDOT officials, and dealing primarily with the Mission Street area where some of the proposals are significantly different from where we are now, and I just wondered if you could share with us some of the reaction, you know, because sometimes, as I was, I was a part of the charrette, sometimes the concern was, well, we can talk about this, but it's not going to happen. And so I'm not asking you to tell us any secrets from the meeting, but I was just curious about whether or not there was an openness.
Yeah. You know, I was really happy, we had several MDOT participants, including your TSC representative whose name is Bill, I think, Mahew? Did I get that right? Yes. I wanted, I know it's Bill, but I want to get his last name right. And the participation in the charrette was really valuable, because for me, it helped me to know if we went down this direction of exploring these ideas, they were ideas that could be explored. And it was just, just today, we did a conference call, so I wanted to run some of these ideas by them again after having a conversation with Planning Commission and Parks Commission and the DDA last week. And, and, you know, I, my presentation was that there are sticking points. There are things that are important for the development of this corridor that have to be prioritized in order for the city's vision to be completed, and I think one of those is that if roundabouts are the solution, they have to be roundabouts that have pedestrian connectivity prioritized. And there's a way that you can design a roundabout where it's good to cross in a way that you can't. So those are, that's an important detail. One of the other details that I discussed was the importance of on-street parking to support retail. If you have a zero-lot line building and you want it to have a, be a retail-character building, it really needs to be supported by parking in the front. And in a downtown setting, like you can see from downtown Mount Pleasant, that parking in the front is on-street parking. That's what makes downtowns work. So, you know, the, you know, of course, the response that, or what was discussed at that conference call was that what we have to do is identify what the issues are, and then determine the process for getting approval on those changes, and understanding what, what design guidelines and what design parameters we need to use to make those decisions. And I think it was a really productive meeting. You know, I think it starts, all things start with a vision, and with a locally preferred alternative, and that's what, that's what we're working on. In the Master Plan, what we want to do is identify what studies need to happen from a feasibility perspective to support the preferred alternative, and also provide some guidance as to how to approach the planning and design to make it happen in a reasonable amount of time. So where, where we're at is the TSC is basically agreed to talk to various departments about what the project ideas are and start to provide us with information about next steps, and, you know, we're going to continue working through writing up the plan, but I would say it was a productive meeting, and I was very happy. The tone was very similar to what we experienced at the charrette, which was very positive.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Any further questions for Paul while he's here? Commissioner Tolles?
Paul, you mentioned there was 500 responses online. Can you tell me ballpark of the four or five days of meeting, how many citizens attended that four day?
You know, I should have that number fresh in my brain, but I don't. I will tell you that we had, I think, I think there were four topic area presentations on two of the charrette days that were in this room here, and they were mostly packed to the brim, so they were meetings that we planned to, you know, possibly be targeted towards 10 to 20 people, and they were often at capacity with, you know, more than 40 people at the event. We also had two, I think there were two public events that were very well-attended as well. So if I were to estimate it, just based on the number of people that I saw, I would probably say between 200 and 400 people at all the events. And I can tell you that we reached out to at least that many people, many stakeholders via either emails or personal calls and contacts in advance to make sure that we were contacting people to let them know about the event and to get people geared up. I will say that to the extent we can provide that information in our charrette summary, it'll, it'll be in there. Oftentimes, you don't get people signing into meetings, though. It's, it's a little bit harder to estimate the in-person people, because people don't like to sign in all the time.
Any other questions for Paul? Commissioner or Vice Mayor Gillis?
Just a couple of questions. Do you envision another building at Town Center in front of Riverview? It looked like the one picture with Town Center showed Riverview in the background and another building.
Yeah, that was the, so the, in the, one of, one of the three sites we looked at was the Town Center, and And each one of those sites had three different, basically visions created during the charrette, which were kind of group design sessions. And then we talked with the, everyone that participated in those sessions about what their preferred alternative was. And that was the one that was selected for Town Center, basically was a removal of the existing parking lot and creating a green, but using part of that parking lot area to create a row of apartments in front of the Riverview building. And that was, I think, a kind of a less intense approach to redeveloping that space than we saw presented out of the zoning ordinance, or was another concept, which is also a very good, a very good concept. But I think this one was represented kind of an alternate approach, which was focus on housing, focus on public space.
And then you mentioned the Ring Road. We've been discussing the Ring Road since I was on the Planning Commission in 2005, trying to get that rerouted to Lincoln and down, out of, away from High Street and our campus area that is both north and south of campus. So that has been on our radar for many, several years and pretty much MDOT controls that and, and the push in, in that direction.
Yep. We did talk about that in our transportation focus group and we didn't get, we didn't get pushback from MDOT on that issue either. That was another one that kind of surprised me, which was, you know, a lot of ideas that have been around for a long time are, they're there because they're good ideas. And I somewhat expected that to fall off from priorities, but people still like the idea. So I think that it's, it's an old idea, but it's an idea that may find its time.
So you spoke to an MDOT representative and they were somewhat receptive?
Yeah. I mean, people don't typically rubber stamp things in, in meetings, but we got really good participation. I don't think anyone, nobody discussed how the, the problems or that it couldn't be done. It was kind of, well, what would it mean if we did it? But conceptually, I don't think anyone was against it. It was my impression, yeah.
And then I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, on-street parking on Mission Street? Is that what you said?
That is what I said, yes.
Okay. Because that's also MDOT-controlled.
It is. And, you know, I say that as, you know, full well saying, you know, this is, it's a difficult thing to put parking on an MDOT road that doesn't already have parking. But I say that with, you know, to, to let everyone know, if, if the goal is to have zero lot line retail buildings, you, you're going to need on-street parking. So those things go hand in hand. And it's better to go forth with the vision as it really is than to try to assume that, okay, we can have that zero lot line building and not have on-street parking and it will work. Because I don't believe that it will. So I think that, you know, when, you know, developers or business owners say they need parking in front of their building, they do. They're right. They need parking in front of their building. And if it's a, you know, main street environment, you get that by on-street parking. So there are many ways to design a boulevard with on-street parking and, you know, there are many places that have that, that type of design. We just have to decide if it will work here. And I, I think that it could. And that's, that's what I heard from MDOT today was kind of conceptually, it seemed like it would work, but we've got to work out the details and figure out the process.
Any other questions? Paul, thank you for your time and all the ideas that you brought forward. I really enjoyed the charrette process. I was there most of the week and we had stakeholders from all areas of Mount Pleasant. And the public has really endless amount of opportunities to have their input on this. All our boards and obviously the commission, our contact information is available and in the future, we will see you again, I'm sure.
You will. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the public input on agenda items. Excuse me. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Commissioner Ling?
I know, there had been some discussion of whether or not we wanted to do a work session. So I'm assuming that if we wanted to do that, that we would need to add it as an addition at this point. Then, then I'd like to make a motion that we add a work session to the agenda.
Commissioner Perchbacher? Is there a discussion? Commissioner Ling?
I'll just mention that the reason that I was suggesting that was simply because the, we had an issue that we thought we were going to be discussing that has now been postponed. We also had the goals that came from our retreat and some concern about whether or not we were going to be able to set some priorities prior to when the budget has to start being developed, which I think is by the end of June. So I had just thought it might be easier if the commission took a shorter time. I don't anticipate that it would, will take very long. We did the work in the retreat. We've just got these four priorities. It just seemed to me it might be easier for everybody to just as a group say, okay, this is the order that, that we want them in. So I'm not looking for a long meeting. I just thought it would be easier for everybody to do it as a group rather than trying to do it individually and then have it put together. So that's why I was suggesting it.
Vice Mayor Gillis?
We're all aware of the money we've spent for the goal-setting for 2020. We spent close to $3,000 to get together with a facilitator for two Saturday mornings and homework for both of those. We spent a lot of time on that. From the very beginning, I was concerned about us having the staff time and the resources to be doing any extra goals for 2020. We have a page, a full page of goals that we haven't addressed from previous goal-setting. And so at that time, when we were discussing if we needed a goal-setting, I, I tried to make everyone aware that we had a lot on our plate. We knew the master plan was coming. We knew the census was coming. But the majority decided to spend the $2,500 in two Saturday mornings and homework along with that. So now we're down to six goals for 2020 and we're still going into more sessions to prioritize. Two of those goals are the master plan and the census. Other things are about sustainability and retirement and how we're going to fulfill the needs of our, our staff. So I'm a little disappointed. We've spent so much money and so much time and here we are discussing another work session. I assume with the amount of people that are in the chambers, we're going to have plenty of public comment for a few agenda items. So I don't think we need to go to 10:30 at night like we did the last City Commission meeting. So I will be voting no on this because I think our, our time this evening would be better well-spent with the, the regular City Commission session.
Commissioner Tolles?
I will also be supporting, not supporting this and voting no. I think a lot of the goals are, as Commissioner Gillis stated, the master plan and the census, which I don't think we have much control over. I think there's more important things to be discussing as parcel B, Pickard Street and other, other agenda items that we need to get done. So I will be voting no on this.
Commissioner Kulik?
I'll be voting no also because I don't believe that the amendment we made to our rules last year that requires five affirmative votes to add something to the agenda is the proper rule, that the adding items to the agenda such as a work session or closed session, in my opinion, should take a simple majority. So I'll be voting no as a protest.
Commissioner Ling?
I'm, I just, it may, it's up to the commission what they want to do. I was just offering it as a possibility because we were looking for a work session where we could talk about it. All I would say, I guess I would just say two things. One is, there's a lot on our agenda, there's nothing on, on our plate, there's only two ways about it. But this, what we're trying to do is to say to the staff, as you prepare the 2020 budget, these are issues that we would like to have you focus on and that's why we have the retreats. We've been doing it for the 12 years that, that I've been on. I think they've been useful. And I guess my sense would be, why would we spend two Saturday mornings doing this and the money to bring in a consultant and then not take a few minutes to finish up the work? So I am going to vote for it. It doesn't look like it's going to pass, but I'm going to vote for it anyway.
I, I'd like to echo some other comments made today. The city of Mount Pleasant is a $30 million organization and every previous commission that we're aware of has had a goal-setting session and spent various amounts of money from, anywhere from, you know, $100 to $5,000. And we, I think we really chose a middle ground in how much money we spent. The goal-setting sessions really shape the budget for staff to prepare for the following year. That budget process needs to be completed by the end of the month and we found an opportunity to maybe discuss this tonight. And I think that tonight was a good opportunity to do that. It's something we have to do regardless of whether we do it tonight or not. And I will be supporting this motion and would urge my fellow commissioners to also support this motion. Vice Mayor Gillis?
Just to let the people know how much we've spent on these goal-setting commission meetings, we get together and decide for the next year. 2011, we spent $1,400. 2012, we spent $2,800. 2013, we did not spend any money on a goal-setting session. They did not hold one on 2013. 2014, we spent $2,800. 2015, we spent another $2,800. 2016, that was a big one, $2,400 and another $2,000 for two sessions. 2017, $1,500. When I came on the commission, I started complaining about how much money we were spending on these goal-setting sessions because we didn't have money for brush pickup or some of the other things we could do for our residents, but we did have money for this. So 2017, it went down to $1,500. In 2018, there was two sessions. One was 100 and one was 500. This year, it cost another $2,500. I just wanted to let you guys know about that.
Any other discussion from the commission? I just wanted to say in, in closing that we're a city that prides itself on best practices and making educated and well-thought-out decisions and the goal-setting process is a part of that. With that, all those in favor of the motion, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The motion fails four to three. Next on our agenda is public input on agenda items. If you are here to talk about recreational marijuana ordinance or the special assessment, we will have public hearings later in the meeting where you will have an opportunity to speak. If you are here to talk about Preston Street parking, now would be a great time to speak and voice your opinions. I will now open the public comment section. Please come to the podium, state your name and your address.
Hi there. This is Kathy Rye, 1717 Elm Street. I'm here today about item number 15 on your, on your agenda. That is where you will consider approval of the 2025 capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan, as you all know, is the plan that, it's very important because it, it sets aside funding for all of the projects that you want to do in the next five years. So I consider this to be of utmost importance. I've seen this commission discuss a lot of issues, this, you know, the sidewalk plowing and, and streets and downtown improvements, a lot of, pretty much everything we want to do these days costs money and unfortunately, it costs a lot of money. So I encourage you to, to really look at this plan line by line and really evaluate for your own selves if there's anything in there that you don't feel is necessary, that you raise an objection to exclude that from the capital improvement plan for this year. Possibly that doesn't mean that you won't do the project. It just helps you set aside more money for the projects that are your priorities. We did have the presentation from McKenna and we see that there's a lot of things that are coming up in the next few years. There was a charrette and people did come to that charrette. I was pretty much at every meeting. The, the one item on the capital improvement plan that I would like to request to be excluded is on page 99 and it is the industrial area street improvement. If you could, if you could make a note of that and talk about that a little bit. It basically is a requ, it's a request for altogether about $800,000 to pave Kenny Street and Sampson Street. They are currently gravel streets and they are in the industrial area. We own a business on that street, Rye's Machine Company, 905 North Kenny. It is a gravel street. We prefer for that street to remain gravel. We, we have both sides of the block and I think there's some other business owners here in the audience tonight who also took time off of work to come down and talk during the charrette and plead their case that they did not want these streets improved. We do not want curbs. We do not want sidewalks because we have large industrial equipment that drives around on those streets and needs to get back into our stockyard so that they can load and unload the work that we need to do. And if you put curbs in there, they'll just be in the way and they will get run over and cause damage. It will make it more difficult for us to do our business. Sorry, I can't stand on my tiptoes too long. So I, I encourage you to, to make an amendment to that approval process for reasons it's not a priority. The money that is in that capital improvement plan is very valuable and as resources get tighter, you might need that for other projects. There's, the property owners don't want it. There's not been, as far as I see, a big public outcry for those streets to be paved. In an ideal world, all streets would be paved and lit and sidewalks, but it's just not a priority at this time. I don't see, I think it'll do more harm than good.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. And there's, it fails to improve the property and the value, it doesn't, the value enough to offset the costs. And I don't believe that this was actually driven by your request. I think it was kind of just a, let's do this. Maybe, maybe you guys did request that that street be paved, but I think that improvement was kind of just thrown into the plan because it was, it was a good idea. It's just not a priority. And when we're talking about priorities, I encourage you to exclude that. Page 99, capital improvement plan on item number 15 tonight. Thank you. I tried to talk fast. All right.
Thank you.
Just a reminder for the guest speakers, we limit it to five minutes, but if for some reason you needed more, you could request the commission as long as the majority of the commission is okay with it, you could finish your presentation.
My name is John Paparel. I live at 1308 East Preston. I want to share a few pictures to help. Now, about three months ago, we got a little thing on our door that said, hey, no parking signs are coming down. No conversation, no nothing, just happened. There was a lot of questions that I had. I've asked a number of different people about who, why, and where this could possibly happen without any, as much as even a simple conversation. Considering I know exactly what happens when the softball tournaments or anything else happens on those fields across the street from me, it turns into utter chaos. Nobody wanted to hear this, so I brought you some pictures. If you look at items one, two, and three, they're basically the same thing. You've got people who don't understand what a fire hydrant's for and they're going to block them off. And with the exception of the shot of the bus on number one, the other ones had cars continuing the entire length of the street. If you had an emergency, you're going to have a problem. Public safety would have to come. Public safety would have to come in. If they needed to get to somewhere, they're going to start smashing some cars and some windows because they have the right to do so. I talked with public safety about the fire hydrants and was informed that it's a fifteen-foot either way, and the enforcement of that falls under the code enforcer. However, he is only on until four thirty. After that, it falls on to the city police department, who, God love you, you have more things important to do than worry about whether somebody can't see a red fire hydrant, for God's sake, including a bus driver who has far more training and driving than probably anybody other than that gentleman right there as far as how to drive on these streets of Michigan. And there's a school bus sitting right there in front of it, and it's sat there for quite some time. Now, Preston is traveled by a number of different police agencies, from the sheriff to the state to the city. No one's enforcing any of it. I'm told it's not necessarily a priority. That's unofficial. It's a safety concern, okay? Moving on to number four. Number four, we do have, if you can see between number four and number five, there actually is a sign that says no parking to corner, which I understand is twenty-five feet from a corner. That is Greenbrier. This particular vehicle is parked to the point where it would block anything from coming through. And if you look also at the amount of traffic in four and five, I want to keep, keep in mind, anybody who's trying to back out of their driveway on Preston, I have had to, when I've had my children over or anybody else, had to walk out in the middle of the road, stop traffic so they could get out of my drive after sitting there for ten minutes trying. And the assumption is, it was told to me by the, by Stacy, that because of all the parking on both sides, people will drive slower. I got news for you. Come on over to my driveway. Come on over. I'll buy you lunch. I'll bring it out. I'll cater it. Come see the mess in the zoo that has been created. Now, on item six and seven, you have a fine Chevrolet pickup truck, which was a very beautiful truck, by the way, but I don't think he really needs to be sitting on that lady's driveway, which, by the way, is the same driveway if you go the other side where the fire hydrant was. And that's where one of the pictures came from. The last one I found rather ironic is number eight, number nine. When I discovered it was actually the same person, two different times, who can't figure out how to park at least a decent modicum of distance away from a handicap entrance to a corner that we paid an awful lot of money to do for the handicap people, I wouldn't want to come off that corner, and I can walk, let alone somebody who is there. So again, I go back to the who and why generated this. No one wants to tell me. Unofficial conversations are the subdivision behind us, didn't like people parking there, and didn't like the fact they had to come in and out of Preston and couldn't see. Well, go back to the guy on the corner. You can't see anyway. You've made it worse, okay? There's supposedly some study that was done in two thousand fourteen that allowed for the parking to be on the south side of Preston. I don't know what was the reason for it, what prompted it. There is absolutely no need whatsoever to have parking on the south side of Preston, with the exception of the school fields. Now, that's not a city concern. It's not a business. Those skid, those school has those fields. They get income for those fields. When they rent them out, they have space for a parking spot between the tennis courts and one of the softball fields. They could drop eighty cars there in a heartbeat. Let them do it. That's what they need to do. They don't need to be sitting in my driveway, which I've had people actually back into my driveway and wait until somebody clears. I had to actually ask them to please leave. He was not happy and called me a number of names. And it's my driveway, which is really rather sad.
I just wanted to let you know your five minutes is up, but if you want to wrap it up.
Could I please?
Yep.
The reduced visi- the reduced visibility and whatnot is just a problem. Someone is going to get hurt. We don't care about bike paths on that road, apparently, and it is a way to get to the college. It is a, there is no reason to ask the city safety to play hall monitor, if you will, to Preston, because you have people who want, are more interested in watching a softball game than they are whether or not they want to be good stewards of the city. I have more to say, but I'll pass on it. So I think you get the drift. It's a bad, bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Paul Harder. I live at thirteen oh four Preston. My wife and I just recently took possession of the property, and I think my house is the one they had the school bus parking next door. Just to irritate the gentleman's concerns, I completely agree. My wife and I have two young boys, age four and age one, and to back out on that road, I was anticipating to have to wait because it's a little bit heavier traffic, you know, road. But to have somebody like a school bus parking there for as long as it did, to back out onto that road would not only be endangering my life, but my children's lives. And that is not necessary. There is plenty of parking on the other side of the road. There's also parking lots at the school. There's absolutely no reason people can't walk to ensure public safety. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Doug Struble, five oh four South Fancher. And here representing lease management. And to express our concern and opposition to the Picker to Sampson paving, we've been in business there since nineteen fifty-nine. If you look in the lower right quadrant of your seal of the city, there's an oil derrick and a pump jack. And much like Ms. Rice mentioned, there's a historical reason why that's not paved. That is extremely heavy equipment going up and down that road. There's in excess of a hundred thousand pounds. And unless you plan on doing a Class A road type situation, it's, it's going to create more hazard than any possible safety standards. I noticed in your need and impact, current drainage and catch basins and ice. I'm on that road every day. This is Michigan. I would say it's just as similar as any gravel road in the county. And icy wise, very similar to any city street. I just backed out of my street that, my driveway goes on Locust Street. There's standing water there. Pavement doesn't solve that. And really concerned you pave this, it's going to be real potholes and real issues. I don't think it'll stand up. But we own five hundred feet of the east side frontage, which is about half of the paving project. And to show up with a bill of approximately seventy thousand dollars to us is just unbearable. We're actually a little disappointed in the city. We didn't get a personal contact or a heads up on this. We discovered it somewhat through the rumor mill, and it's in a project like this as a taxpayer that already pays eighteen thousand dollars a year, twenty to forty employees, depending on how we're doing. We really don't want this. And she's exactly right when she mentioned equipment and backing it in, curbs. It's just a bad situation, and we really would appreciate if you'd remove that from your budget. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. Paula Erskine, twelve oh two East Preston. Again, I just want to reiterate what the gentleman have said. We've lived there for thirty-five years. I think initially when we moved in, you could park on both sides of the street, but there were, didn't appear to be as many sporting events going on. I was thankful, truthfully, that it rained so much this spring because it is horrible. We drive a pickup and a conversion van, and for when we back out, I'm still employed at the university. When I back out, I have to back into the oncoming traffic because of the car that's parked directly behind my driveway. So if I have to make that swing when they're right up against my driveway, I virtually cannot see. And the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit is definitely not. I would say the average speed is forty to forty-five miles an hour, and it's not slowing traffic down at all. And they don't take into consideration that there are people going to those games, children running out into the road. And so I just encourage you to put those signs back up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment tonight on agenda items excluding our public hearings? Seeing no one coming forward, I will close this public hearing. Next on our agenda is the receipt of petitions and communications. Manager Ridley.
Yes, and this part of the agenda tonight, we have the report on pending items. We have the February minutes from the Traffic Control Committee, correspondence that was received on Preston Street from Marge Havens at one oh oh eight East Preston and Jan Perkins. Then we also have correspondence in the packet that was received regarding your proposed ordinance to temporarily opt out of recreational marijuana. That was received by J. David Kerr. And then there's a communication from the Federal Aviation Administration regarding the proposed wind turbine project. And I would just comment on that, that when we went into this comment period, we knew that there would be two comment periods, one at the FAA level and one at the MDOT level. And the MDOT level is much more focused on protecting the airspace around existing airports and reviewing compliance with Michigan's Tall Structure Act. So what we heard from FAA was not really a surprise to us. We really expected the more thorough review of the airports in our area would be done during the MDOT review, which is the next stage of that. And then on your dais tonight, you have two communications that came in after the packet was put out. One was from Rick and Paula Erskine on twelve oh two East Preston, and the second was from Rudolph Klur and Don Struble from lease management about the paving on Kenny Street that you've heard about this evening. So those will become part of the official record as well.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to our consent calendar items. Consent calendar items are items on the agenda that have an asterisk next to them. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar tonight? I will start that, I will be taking item number nine off the consent calendar, which is our last meeting's minutes. Seeing no one else, I will have Manager Ridley read through our consent calendar.
Yes, we just have three items on the consent calendar now this evening. The first one is we're recommending a ward of a bid for the purchase of caustic soda, which is one of the chemicals we use in our water treatment process. In previous years, we've only awarded the bid for six months because of the volatility of the market. None of the suppliers would provide a lock-in price for longer than that. So our six-month bid that was approved in December was coming up for expiration. So we sent out bids and are recommending authorization to purchase from JCI Jones Chemical at a cost of five hundred ninety-five dollars per ton for the remainder of this year, which, by the way, is lower than the price that was in the December bids. You will note that in the memo, it's indicated that the companies have indicated that the volatility in that market seems to have stabilized. So we're hopeful that this year we'll be able to get a twelve-month bid on that for the 2020 year. Secondly, we're recommending that you approve a resolution that would recognize the Isabella County Restoration House as a nonprofit entity. This resolution's required by the state because the entity was applying for a gaming license within, a charitable gaming license within the city of Mount Pleasant. So it's a standard resolution we do for nonprofit entities. And then the last item is approval of payrolls and warrants.
Vice Mayor Gillis.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Commissioner Kulik.
Second.
Any discussion? I just wanted to add that ICRH, if you're not aware, is the county's homeless shelter. It provides temporary shelter and a path for sustainable and independent living for the people who utilize its, its services. And I'd just like to thank the community for being very supportive of that mission. Without any other comment, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? It passes. Next on our agenda is number nine, which is the city commission minutes. Do I have a motion to approve this, the mission, the minutes from May twenty-eighth? Commissioner Kulik?
So moved.
Commissioner Tolles?
Support.
I just had an amendment to the minute, to the minutes. In the second line on the first page, it says, Mayor Joseph called the meeting to order, and the Pledge of Allegiance was recited. I just wanted to add an amendment to that that would say, Mayor Joseph called the meeting to order, and a group of Boy Scouts present led, led us in the Pledge of Allegiance, or led us in the recital of the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask that I have a second for that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who was your second on that?
Amy. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the amendment to amend the minutes, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Now, we're on to the original amended motion. Any discussion on the minutes from last meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of the original motion as amended, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? The motion passes. Next on our meeting is our, next on our agenda is our first public hearing of the night. It is a public hearing on an ordinance to temporarily prohibit recreational marijuana establishments. Manager Ridley, would you like to lead us off?
Yes, as mentioned in the last meeting, when this matter was set for public hearing, the state law that was passed in November gives local municipalities, excuse me, the opportunity to decide if the municipality wants to allow establishments in the community that grow, process, test, transport, or sell recreational marijuana. There's many similarities to the recreational law, as there was in the medical law that we discussed much of last year, but there's also a number of differences between the two laws. Like the medical law, the state will be issuing regulations related to the establishments. And we had set a timeline to be able to review those regulations and make a decision for our municipality about whether we wanted to put any restrictions in place for the time, place, or manner of those establishments. But the state last month indicated that they may be ahead of schedule and hope to begin accepting applications maybe as soon as September first, based on an assumption that they'll be issuing the regulations in this current month, June. As we looked at the timeline, it's not possible with our meeting schedule and the planning commission meeting schedule to have any local regulations in place by, you know, by September first. And the risk we would run because the law requires a municipality to opt out is that we could have an establishment open up in our community without any of our local restrictions in place. So we've asked the city attorney to draft a ordinance amendment, which would allow us to temporarily opt out of allowing those establishments, and therefore we could follow a timeline for you to have the discussions about the allowing of the establishment and what kind of restrictions you may want to put on those establishments locally. And as soon as that ordinance was in place, then we could repeal this ordinance opting out. So after the public hearing tonight, we're recommending you approve the ordinance that was drafted by the city attorney to temporarily opt out.
With that, I will open the public hearing. This is a time to voice your opinions on that proposed ordinance. You may step to the podium, state your name, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Anyone would like to make comment? Seeing no one come forward, I will now close the public hearing. I would enter Commissioner Kulik.
Move the ordinance as recommended by the attorney.
Commissioner Tolles?
Support.
Is there discussion? Vice Mayor Gillis.
I would just like to remind the public, this is a temporarily opting out of the recreational, recreational marijuana. I believe in the light of the last election and the support of our citizens, not only within the community, within the state, I would hope that this commission would move forward in some shape or form to honor the voters. I also believe that if we would spend our time more wisely, we probably could have fashioned an ordinance to be ready before September first. We sometimes use our work sessions for not the most biggest priorities, and we also, of course, use- And we also, of course, used a couple Saturdays for goal setting that haven't, hasn't been completed. So just wanted to inform you of that.
Commissioner Kulik?
I'd like to point out that it's almost impossible for us to set our regulations until we know what the state's going to do.
Any other discussion? I would echo Commissioner Kulik's comments that we are being, we are being responsible with our decision to wait. If you've noticed, over 400 different communities in the state of Michigan have chosen to opt out. And my, my feeling is that most of those are temporary because the state is moving much faster than they did with medical marijuana regulations. And this is a way for us to see what the state has to say about the initiated law from last year's election. We do have a couple of work sessions scheduled next month to start the discussion on this. And I think both of our timelines that we looked at, near the end of the year, we'll definitely have something to vote on. So without any other discussion, I think we'll vote on the ordinance. All those in favor of approving the ordinance as written, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing tonight is on special assessment, is Resolutions Number Three and Number Four. Manager Ridley, would you like to introduce us?
Yes, as you're aware, since 2003, the city has utilized a public law, Act 120, to create a special assessment, a Principal Shopping District Board. And that board has recommended special assessments for activities that are provided that are unique to the downtown area. Initially, the funds in the first couple of years were used for both maintenance-type activities and promotional activities. But since 2007, the funds have only been used for maintenance activities. Currently, the assessment covers snow removal in parking lots downtown and the sidewalks adjacent to them, grounds care, including the hanging planters, utilities, and then annual power washing of the sidewalks. The Principal Shopping District Board is responsible for making a recommendation to the City Commission on the level of assessment. And their recommendation for the next two years to cover 2020 and 2021 is to use the same formula for the assessment, but to increase the total assessment by approximately $8,000 to cover increased costs primarily due to minimum wage increases. They did recommend two other changes this year, though, in that they're recommending that we only do the power washing of the sidewalks if the snow removal costs come in under budget on the prior season. And they've also asked that we track how many times snow removal would have occurred if the guideline for overtime would have been at, overtime being utilized at three inches of snowfall instead of four. So no change in service, but just a tracking of that. So based on those recommendations, the increase for the next two years would generate a total of $123,500 across all of the properties in the district. But like all special assessments, the process requires consideration of five resolutions and two public hearings. Tonight is your first public hearing on this. And based on what you hear at the public, or I'm sorry, that tonight's public hearing is supposed to be about the necessity of the assessment to provide the activities. Based on what you hear, you can then consider Resolutions Three and Four. And Resolution Three asks for the assessment role to be prepared, which has already done, been done because the Principal Shopping District Board always likes to see that. And then Resolution Four sets the second public hearing, which would be at your next meeting. So we recommend you listen to public comment and then consider Resolutions Three and Four.
Just as before, I will open the public comment. If you have comments on the special assessment and Resolutions Three and Four, come to the podium, state your name, and you will have five minutes and your address as well.
Norman Curtis, 1414 East Broadway Street, Mount Pleasant. I'm opposed to the special assessment being raised again. Two years ago, you raised it 30 or 35 percent. I thought that was a pretty good raise, you know, for special assessment. It's a tax kind of really, is what it is. The people that are on my block, Ricks, Wunderhurst, Tom Horgan, we talked about today a little bit, and those two are opposed to it. I guess we need to figure a way, maybe instead of spending more money, let's find a way maybe to cut some money, you know? Every time we do something, we want to spend more money. Several years ago, they put round planters downtown, irrigated them, did, did all the things they need to do to make it work, maintenance-free, and they looked great. Last year, I think we tore them all out, irrigation and all, and we hung planters on the poles that had to be watered three times a week. Maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. That's the rest of our life, we're going to water them three times a week in the summertime. Why do we make decisions when we have something that's maintenance-free pretty much? We tear it out and put up something that costs us money every week. Maybe we better find a way to do some cutting in these assessments or these taxes so we can survive downtown. A lot of empty buildings downtown. They raised our assessment on our taxes 18 to 20 percent this year, and now you want to raise our assessment two years after you raised it 35 percent. I think enough's enough. If you want empty buildings, just keep taxing us more money, and we'll empty them all. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to give public comment tonight? Seeing no one come forward, I will now close the public hearing. Commissioner Kulik?
I'm going to move that we approve Resolution Three and Four as presented, just so we can start discussion on the topic.
Commissioner Ling?
Second.
Commissioner Kulik?
The speaker indicated that the SEV in the downtown went up 18 to 20 percent last year. Do you know if that's accurate?
I don't have that with me tonight to be able to say one way or the other.
Thank you. I'd move to postpone this until we can get an answer on that question, whether it's in fact true that the SEV in the downtown, proposed special assessment district increased 18 to 20 percent?
Is there a second? Commissioner LaLone? Discussion on the postponement? Commissioner Ling?
The only question that I would have on that is whether or not it will cause any difficulty in terms of timing, if we wait another two weeks before we then set the public hearing, because I know the assessment will then have to be applied for the next year. This is just June, but I just want to get a clarification of whether or not that will cause a timing problem.
No, it really won't. As you know, we have to give you the 2020 operating budget at your first meeting in September. So depending on where we are in this process, when we have to finalize that document, we'll have to make a judgment call about what to put into that budget. But we can always amend it throughout the fall as this issue is finalized or as changes are made to it. So a delay of two weeks is not going to be problematic for this.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Can I ask a question just to make sure I know? Well, maybe I'll wait to see if it passes, and then I'll ask my clarification question.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of postponement, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Same. The postponement passes?
Seven zero.
Yes.
So my clarification question, Mayor, and the rest of the commission, is to make sure that we look at the right data for you. Because when we talk about downtown, it often is defined in a number of ways. We have the Principal Shopping District boundaries, which is what this assessment applies to. And then we have boundaries that are in the Tax Increment Finance Authority, which are different boundaries. This assessment doesn't apply to that, but it's a different way of looking at downtown. And then sometimes when people talk about downtown, they're talking about just Main and Broadway. So I guess I want some clarification about what kind of analysis you're looking for so that when we bring it to you in two weeks, we're analyzing the correct area.
I'm looking for the proposed special assessment district.
So the Principal Shopping District area?
In fact, did theirs go up 18 to 20 percent last year, as, as indicated?
Okay.
Or what was that? You know, it may have been 16 and a half percent. I mean, I'd like to know what the percentage was.
Onto our next agenda item is item number 13, to consider amendment to engineering services contract with C2AE for a chemical containment system at the wastewater treatment plant. Manager Ridley, would you like to start us off?
Yes, I would. We had a contract approved in 2018 for the design of a new building at the wastewater treatment plant that could be used for chemicals and the chemical distribution system in order to get those distribution systems out of the lower level of our existing building because we had some failures with some of the systems, and it was difficult, if not impossible, to appropriately service them. So we, the engineering was done and bids were sent out for the new building. And the design came in at almost double the amount that was anticipated for the project. So as DPW Director John Zhang and wastewater treatment supervisor Tim Middleton and the staff looked at it, they researched a number of alternatives to try to address that cost and have come up with a couple of alternative ideas, which require some additional engineering. And those alternative ideas would allow us to look at an alternative design of that building and/or maybe even look like, look at an alternative treatment methodology, which could save us costs in the long term, both in operations and maintenance. And so what we're asking for is an amendment to the engineering services contract of $19,990 so that that design can be done and we can work with the engineers to evaluate the best alternatives before we invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in this project. And also, it will allow us to properly evaluate the ongoing maintenance and operational costs. So we're recommending an amendment to the contract.
Commissioner Kulik?
Move the adjustment, move the amendment.
Commissioner LaLone? Commissioner Ling?
The only comment, it was very interesting and somewhat confusing, reading through the description of where, where everything is. And I certainly appreciate trying to look at, at a cost-effective way to do this. I guess the only thing that I'd like to highlight, at least from my perspective, is whatever system, if we're looking at this ultraviolet system as a, a different way in which to treat the water, and we end up with the same quality of treatment, that would be fine. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want a cost-benefit analysis that says that we would do anything of lower quality.
Yeah, we're required under our permit to treat to a certain quality level, under both our EPA permit and our state permit. So we would not decrease our quality of treatment in any way.
John, did you have any insight into how UV is effective in treating the water?
This process is, UV light is used all around the state, all around the country. So this isn't something new. And this has potential to eliminate that whole set of chemicals. So this is a good thing.
I'd just like to add that I think this is a really good amendment to support. If we move to UV, it's going to reduce the amount of chemicals we use and really free up some of the ongoing maintenance costs that we currently incur. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion passes. Our next item on the agenda is item number 14, is we are receiving the igloo review and considering a revision to the downtown outdoor dining policy, which was postponed from May 28th to review the feasibility of having overhead electric setup. Manager Ridley, would you like to introduce us?
Yes, as you mentioned, you postponed this for two weeks ago. And the original recommendation was to change the policy to allow biodomes or igloos, as was pilot tested in the February-March timeframe of this year. The motion to postpone was to ask staff to look at whether the electrical should be fed to the domes overhead instead of across the sidewalk. So staff reviewed that and has recommended that we continue with the way it was done during the pilot period because the concern is the overhead electrical would have some aesthetic issues around it. But there was also concern about them being an attractive nuisance, or the wind may be affecting them, as we found that to be the case with some of the lights in our trees. In addition, we heard from the county electrical inspector late last week, and he indicated he would also be concerned about potential damage to the cords if the cords came out of the up, the second-level windows. And again, the wind and how that might do something to the cords. So we are recommending that we remain with the cord cover over the width of the sidewalk like we did during the pilot period. So as a reminder, you have two motions on the table already, one for the original revision and then one to amend it. So just like any amended motion, you have to work backwards from the amendment first and vote on that one.
So the first item of discussion is for the overhead electrical hookup. Do I have a motion?
The motion's already on the table.
Okay. So we'll go into discussion. Is there any discussion on that? Commissioner Kulik?
I personally fail to see how overhead feed of the electric is going to be any more, any less of, any more or any less of an attractive nuisance than the existing banners that we have on the short poles downtown or the hanging baskets that we have in the summertime. So I will be supporting the, the amendment. The cords, I would assume, are going to be replaced every year. When they tear down the igloo and decide what's good and what's bad, they'll replace the cord. So I'm going to be voting yes for it. I think it's a safety issue that they should be fed overhead.
Any other discussion on the item? Seeing no other?
Could I just have clarification or rereading of that motion, please?
It was from the last packet, and the motion was to amend the original motion to require that electricity be provided from overhead rather than across the sidewalk.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Tolles?
I think the problem was on, on the electric was, if you run out of the overhead window and bring it down, you don't have enough power to run a heater. I think they were talking about the wintertime of putting a heater in there. So you'd almost have to run a main line out of the building in order to supply enough electricity to run a heater.
I'm sorry, that's just the cost of doing business, in my opinion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of supporting the amendment to require that electricity be provided from overhead rather than across the sidewalk, please vote by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Aye. That motion fails three of four.
Who was the third?
I think Commissioner Perschbacher, Commissioner Kulik, and Vice Mayor Gillis. In front of us now, we have the original motion, which is to approve the updated downtown or outdoor dining policy and application procedures as presented by staff. Is there any discussion on this item? I would, I would add that, you know, this past fall, or this past winter, we had the pilot program, and it was, seemed to be very popular. Our staff has come back with some minor adjustments for some safety issues, just including... minor adjustments for some safety issues, just including the material that the igloo is made out of and how the electric is set up. But other than that, it's been a very positive feedback from all, from the community and staff. And so I will be supporting the updated downtown dining, downtown outdoor dining policy. Vice Mayor Gillis?
I voted against this last time we took a look at it and before, when the pilot program ran. My concern is other businesses taking on a parking spot downtown in the winter and also stringing their electrical wires on the sidewalk with a covering. I still think that is a safety hazard. So I will be voting no.
Commissioner Kulik?
I'd like to propose an amendment to the ordinance that the applicant saw cut the sidewalk and install a conduit to provide the electricity under the sidewalk.
Is there a second for Commissioner Kulik's amendment? Vice Mayor Gillis? Is that a second?
Yes, it is.
Discussion on the item. Commissioner Kulik?
This would solve the problem that Commissioner Tolles indicated that they'd be taking power from the upstairs that may not be big enough. They're going to saw cut a very narrow chunk out of the sidewalk, install a conduit that'll run, be run back into their building. They can run a wire direct back to their main power breaker box and have a plug out there on the sidewalk. When the spring comes, they can trip the breaker in the basement, stick the wire back down the conduit, put a cork on it, and you'll never even know it's there until the fall when you need it again.
My concern with the amendment is, is it, would that be cost prohibitive for the business owner? You know, the current proposed fee is a hundred and twenty-five dollars, I believe, for the winter and we, we do two hundred and fifty dollars for the summer. And I think the policy is shaped in a way to promote our downtown businesses to create an atmosphere to really serve our public better. And I, I worry that, that this would be cost prohibitive for some of our downtown businesses that we always hear are working very hard to make ends meet. And also, it seems like a solution to a problem that, you know, we worried about people, the policy indicates that you have to have covering over the electrical connection.
Covering is a trip and fall hazard.
So is a curb. I just, I just feel that.
I'm not putting a curb in there.
Right, I know. But I just was trying to make a comparison that, that I, I just think we're getting in the way of the business owners too much if we, if we go that route.
I, I have no idea what the cost of those iglues are, but if a few hundred dollars is going to break the project, that it, it's not, this is doable. It's not going to break the project.
And I guess that, that for me, that highlights a point is I don't, I don't know what it would cost to do what you're proposing, but it sounds expensive. Vice Mayor Gillis?
If this amendment did pass, I would feel more comfortable about approving this new ordinance or the, the winter portion of our patios ordinance. And I also agree with Commissioner Kulik. I don't think a couple hundred dollars would impact the project enough or whoever wants to use this to not do it. And I would hope that if we're considering cost prohibitive businesses, that we can do that across the board on other issues such as special assessments and the industrial area that was just spoke about earlier.
I would ask Commissioner Kulik, can you explain further exactly what it would mean for someone to, are you talking about cutting into the sidewalk?
Mm-hmm. Yes. You'd rent, they would rent or have a contractor come in and saw cut out a piece of sidewalk, probably about a foot wide, because then you're going to have to pull that sidewalk out, be able to put a conduit in there and then repour the sidewalk.
I guess I would like some staff input on, on that item.
And I move to postpone this again.
You should second it if you want it. If you want more staff.
Is there a second on the postponement?
I thought you wanted it.
I just, I was just talking.
Okay, I'll second it.
Vice Mayor Gillis seconded the postponement. Is there discussion on the postponement? Commissioner Tolles?
I just think the cost of it is going to be less than two hundred dollars. So I don't think there's a big cost involved in it. And I would be supporting that of, of saw cutting it. You wouldn't have to saw cut anymore in four inches wide, put a piece of conduit up and then put a receptacle there.
Then we would be avoiding a trip hazard and people with wheelchairs.
Commissioner Ling?
I, I'm not going to vote in favor of the postponement. I, I'm not in favor of our doing it differently. We, we asked the staff, we had an experiment, we had it up, we looked at it, staff looked at it. They concluded that there were some issues that could be addressed with the wiring, made recommendations on how that could be handled. And I have confidence, given the fact that we've already tried it, that it will work. We're trying to encourage creative use of downtown. This, this seems like a creative use. I think we've got a lot of staff, far be it for me, since I'm frequently accused of micromanaging, but it feels a little bit like we're doing a fair amount of micromanaging here. And I feel comfortable with what we have at this point. I've, and so I'm not going to vote for the postponement.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of postponing action until we get staff input on saw cutting into the cement?
What exactly do you want from staff? That'll depend whether or not I'm voting yes or no.
Yeah. I would like to know if they want to have concerns about this being an issue with the quality of the sidewalk. Currently, we, the city oversees people contracting our sidewalk. And if we're going to have business owners in the downtown saw cutting into the sidewalk and then repouring, I just, I have concerns that maybe there would be an issue with the sidewalk there. It's something that's above my expertise and I would like staff's input on that. So the postponement would be to get staff's input on that possible solution. Any other discussion? All those in favor of postponement to get staff's input on the saw cutting and the quality of sidewalk conditions through that solution, please vote by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
So that motion fails.
Motion to postpone fails.
Oh, the motion, motion postponed.
Was it four, three?
Yeah. Yeah.
Why would it?
Do you want a show of hands?
Three said to postpone, four said not to.
Oh, I had it the other way around.
Okay. I think we had.
To make sure.
I think we had Commissioner Perschbacher, Commissioner Loon, Commissioner Ling, and myself voting against.
Could I, could I just ask that we do a show of hands?
That's what I was going to say. Can we just do a show of hands so see who was in favor and who was against?
Okay. So if you were in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And against?
Okay. I thought I, when you raised your hand like this, I thought you were raising your hand for the yes. So that was my confusion. So, there we go. Okay.
And so now we are back to the motion to require our business owners to saw cut the sidewalk, to put an electrical hookup, I believe. Is there discussion on that item? Commissioner Kulik?
We allocate money every year in our budget for sidewalk repair, sidewalk replacement where it's crap, cracked up and crappy and trip and fall hazards exist. It may be possible that the person that wants to put one of these iglues, iglues in has sidewalk that's in poor condition and they could piggyback that with the city and it would cost them even less than nothing, other than the cost of fifteen feet of conduit or however wide that sidewalk is. So I'm going to leave my motion as is and, and vote in favor of the amendment.
Any other discussion? Vice Mayor Gillis?
I would just like my fellow commissioners to consider that if we had multiple business owners that all wanted to put a patio out during the winter and because they needed a heater to keep their patrons warm, each one of them are going to string an electrical lot, wire from their business to the patio along our sidewalk at wintertime with snow and ice. Because we're all worried about slip and falls and how clear our sidewalks are and how difficult that is going to be. We're considering one business owner to do this right now, but that does not mean that we're going to be limited to one. So there could be several businesses that do this.
Is there any other discussion? I just see the issue as we've had a successful trial run and the conditions that they were, we didn't have this concern. And so I, I feel that we can move forward.
I'm sorry, I had that concern from day one.
True.
I did too.
But our staff, our community, no one has come forward with that except for a couple of commissioners. And I, I respect their opinion and I respect the, the concern. But I also want to promote the downtown businesses to be able to, to be able to do this in a relatively easy manner. The planning that you would have to put into, I think, to do some of these other solutions requires more time, more money, and I think we should be making it as easy as possible. And it does not to say that down the road, that if there is a problem that arises, that we could move on that issue. But for now, I, I think we have a good solution and a good policy and I will, I will be supportive of that. So I will not be supporting the saw cutting amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment before we vote? All those in favor of the amendment to require business owners to saw cut the sidewalk and run conduit underneath to connect the electrical outlets, vote by, please vote by saying aye.
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 And those opposed?
Nay.
Aye. So the motion fails. We are now on the original motion, which is to amend the, the outdoor dining policy for, for winter dining. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor of amending the outdoor dining policy, please, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Aye.
And that motion passes four to three. Okay. Our next agenda item is item number fifteen, which is to consider the approval of the two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-five capital improvement plan.
As you know, according to the city charter, a proposed capital improvement plan must be submitted to you the first meeting in April. And since that time, we've had a presentation and two work session discussions and we amended three sections of the plan from what was originally provided to you. The first amendment was in our water fund section where we resorted some of the water priorities based on work that needs to be done on well seventeen. And those revised pages were in your packet. The other two areas that we made amendments to were in the major and local streets area. And the changes were to reflect the current width of streets that are scheduled to be reconstructed so that you would have that information available. And then we also changed Brown Street to stay at the current width based on the action you took at a prior meeting. And we changed Michigan and Illinois to also stay at the current width upon their reconstruction with the understanding that we would reach out to those property owners about the possibility of interest in changing the width. But our assumption would be we would stay at the current width. Lastly, we tried to make it more clear that the decision on Pickard Street would be addressed later in June. So we added a note to indicate that that decision had not yet been made and we intend to have that on your next meeting for a final decision. So those were the changes that were included in your packet for your consideration. But as you heard at the public hearing at the last meeting and received the letters tonight and the public input this evening regarding the potential paving of the streets north of Pickard, that project has actually been a concept in the plan for a couple of years. But this year, there was more detail included in what streets would actually be considered. And it was actually moved out a year so that the first construction wouldn't take place until two thousand twenty-two. And the plan even indicates that a survey of the affected properties would occur before the project would move forward. But you also heard that Pickard area is an area that's being looked at as part of the master plan. And so really, I think you have a couple of options this evening in regard to the public input you've received on that. You can either approve the plan as presented with that, knowing it's a couple of years out and we will have the master plan next year and can look at, have more outreach to talk about that and can amend it in next year's plan before it's approved. Or you can do, as was suggested by some of the speakers this evening, of approve the plan without the project on page ninety-nine as part of your approval. And again, next year, we could still look at it again based on what we hear from the master plan and consider whether it should be put back in, in some way or not. So either way, you have more time to consider whether that's a project you're really interested in or not. It's just a matter of whether you want to approve the plan with it in there, knowing it will be revisited, or whether you're more comfortable approving the plan without it in there and look at it later.
Commissioner Tolles?
I will not be supporting this unless there's an amendment from page ninety-nine to remove Sampson Street and Kenny Street from this.
Commissioner Tolles, I just, we don't have, we need a motion on the floor before discussion. So do I have a motion? Vice Mayor Gillis?
Make a motion to approve the capital improve, question, point of order. If I make a motion, do I have to vote in the affirmative?
No, but you can't speak against your motion.
Correct. You can, you can vote against it, you just can't speak against it.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the capital improvement plan with the deletion of page ninety-nine, which would be the reconstruction of the industrial area north of Pickard for two thousand twenty-two in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, where seventy percent would be assessed to the property owners in that area.
Second.
Commissioner Kulik?
I cannot support that motion. I could support pushing it back so it's not going to show up until six years out and use it as a placeholder in the, in the plan. It's a plan, it's not a budget. That it's telling us as a commission that sometime in the future, we're going to want to pave that and that's the cost and we can adjust that for inflation sometime in the future. If we delete it, I think we're selling ourselves short. We don't know what's going to be in that master plan. So I will not be supporting deleting that from the plan. I think it belongs in there. Plus, a good portion of the cost of that is special assessment. As we saw tonight, there's a process, multiple public hearings, multiple resolutions that have to go through before the special assessment would be approved. So I'm, I'm not going to support deleting it from the plan.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Tolles?
Again, I will not be supporting this unless we amend it and take it out. I have property on both Sampson and the west, west end of Sampson and Kenny Street also. As was said, there's lease management, there's Ford, it's a drilling company, Wilson Steel Fab, Rise Machine, Harbison Fisher Pump Shop. It's all heavy industrial. And I don't know what the big rush is now. I've owned that property for forty-plus years and it was never discussed before. It's, it's always been gravelled. and it was never discussed before, it's, it's always been gravelled. And I don't see, uh, how we're gonna do this eight hundred thousand dollars of improvement and it's gonna raise the land valuation on this property. It's not gonna happen. The stuff's over assessed as it is right now. So I, I don't see any, any positive results out of this. You've got a lot of other stuff that needs to be done that should take priority over this.
Commissioner Ling?
I guess I would, um, I, I'm confident that if this project is a project the staff decides is consistent with our new master plan, it will come back. That, that's what I heard the city manager saying was, this isn't gonna go away. We're gonna be evaluating one way or the other and it's just what does the commission feel the most comfortable with in terms of this year's, um, capital improvement. And since I won't be here next year to vote on the capital improvement plan, I figured I, I'd make it clear that I do think we need to evaluate it and I just assumed it was evaluated and then put back in if after the survey it's determined and, and we've looked at the master plan and it's determined that this is the best use of it. But I was at the, the charrette where there was a lot of discussion of what's the best use of that area and how it should be kept. So I think that's very much, um, in the disca, eh, eh, very much an area that we're going to be discussing, discussing before we finalize the master plan. But I would certainly want the staff to keep their eyes on it and reevaluate it and bring it back if they felt that that was, uh, the most appropriate project for us to be doing in that area. I would not want it to disappear.
I'd like to make it clear that I will not be supporting the motion on the floor. Um, as Manager Ridley pointed out, um, this is, this is a project that we will have public input and, um, notice when this project is to be done. This project isn't planned for at least a couple of years. And this is a, as Commissioner Kulik noted, this is a plan, this isn't a budget and it is, uh, set to adaptations in the future. So Commissioner Kulik?
Deleting it potentially, um, lessens the opportunity to apply for grants, if any, become available in the future from, um, uh, the state to do industrial improvements in that area.
Vice Mayor Gillis?
Just wanted to clarify, um, I misspoke. It actually is a larger amount of money that are we expecting our property owners in that area. The three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars is just for the street Kenny from Pickard to Sampson. And then in two thousand twenty-five, there's another four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that will be used to pave Sampson from Franklin to Kenny. So that's a total of eight hundred and two thousand dollars with seventy percent being put on those property owners in that north industrial area from Pickard.
Commissioner Kulik?
Again, the special, the amount put on the property owners cannot be done until there's the public hearing process for a special assessment that we've talked about earlier.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye. And this is to my motion?
This was your motion to approve the capital improvement project or plan without page ninety-nine. So if you vote in support of this motion, page ninety-nine will no longer be in the capital improvement plan.
Correct.
And you will pass the rest. So all those in favor of that motion, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. That motion fails three to four. Commissioner Kulik?
Um, I'll try another motion. I move that we approve the capital improvement plan with an amendment that on page ninety-nine, the, um, pavement of those streets be put out six years out into the future. And they're, they're in, the intent is that they're there as a placeholder, not necessarily as a project that we're, that we're intent on doing, but to let the public know that sometime in the future that needs to be done and it's just holding a place.
Is there a second on the motion? Commissioner Loon? Discussion? Vice Mayor Gillis?
I have a few more other concerns about the capital improvement plan. I just want the public to know, we have spent, um, a few work sessions, uh, one works, one whole work session on the capital improvement plan. We spent more time on goal setting for two thousand twenty with six goals than we did on our capital improvement plan. Um, there are several areas that I'm concerned about. One is a hundred thousand dollars for construction of new sidewalks and so.
Vice Mayor Gillis, I'd like to remind you that we have to keep to the motion that is on, being discussed.
I'm, I'm trying to convey to the public why I won't be supporting the capital improvement plan. And so, uh, the hundred thousand dollars for new sidewalks, being that we're having problems trying to find snow removal for sidewalks, I don't feel it necessary to put another hundred thousand dollars into new sidewalks. I also, this capital improvement plan, we are putting Pickard Street off for two weeks. We are not deciding Picker Street, Pickard Street for the three lane conversion in this capital improvement plan, although every other thing had to be decided before that. Um, the difference between that is six thousand dollars to re-stripe it the way it is or twenty-two thousand dollars to stripe it with bike lanes. That is not in this capital improvement plan, that'll be next, uh, two weeks from now. We are also, um, doing a retention pond for our south industrial park. We are taking thirty thousand dollars off the economic initiative fund to, uh, expand that retaining pond. I believe that this should be on the parcel owners within that industrial park. Um, every, there's, uh, several other issues, but I won't bore you with all my concerns, but I will be voting no.
Any other discussion on the motion at hand? My concern with the motion is that we're putting a project out unnecessarily long. Um, currently it's two thousand nineteen, the first phase of this project is two thousand twenty-two. Um, and before that project happens, we'll, there will be public comment and public input um, sought after and necessary for the project to be completed. I, I agree with Commissioner Kulik that the project, that the plan should stay in the plan, but I do not agree that we should move it out six years. Is there any other discussion on capital improvement plan? Commissioner Ling?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm going to support this be, and although I completely agree with a, a number of the comments that, uh, were made by the mayor, I think it's possible it will get moved back to two thousand twenty-two. I think regardless of what we do tonight, this project is going to be looked at and will come back to the commission. I, I've, I've been here long enough to have seen, this is the, my twelfth capital improvement plan. There is not a single one that we've gotten that didn't have some things moved in it. The fact that it was in, in two thousand twenty-three doesn't mean it wouldn't be moved to twenty-two or to twenty-four every year. In fact, if you look at the, at the material at the end, it talks about the things that were originally planned for one year and then got moved to another year. So the fact that we approve this, at least from my experience, doesn't mean it may not pop up again in two thousand twenty-two depending on the review that is done by the staff. That happens frequently, so, um, I don't have any, I didn't have any problem with the first one. I don't have any problem with this one either. It, it keeps it listed and it allows the staff to then be able to come back and say, okay, it was listed for two thousand twenty-six, but we've moved it out. That's exactly what we did with the water projects. I mean, that's what we did at our last work session, was rearrange all of them based on the input and the, and the dollars that were available. So I think that this project is going to stay a matter of discussion. Um, and putting it in two thousand twenty-six doesn't mean that it can't come back at a later time if that's what the staff decides. Um, so I'm comfortable with doing it this way. If fails and we just pass the plan as is, I can vote for that too. I think we, if this project is something that there is reason to believe is worth doing and ends up getting support, um, in that area, it will come back to us regardless of, of what we do tonight. So all that we're really approving at this point is the two thousand twenty projects that will go into the two thousand twenty budget and that, and it's important for us to do that. And the rest of it, I think, will still be subject to debate and discussion, um, over the next few years.
Is there any other discussion? Vice Mayor Gillis?
So last clarification, even though the motion says we're pushing it out to two thousand twenty-six, means nothing. It can still be put back in two thousand twenty-two.
A future commission can do that at any time, yes. Just like if you totally removed it, they could add it back at any time. Call the question?
Immediate to vote?
Everybody's agreeing, yeah? I'd say go ahead and call it.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please vote by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? Nay. The motion passes four to three. Our next item on the agenda is the Consider Resolution in Support of Final Approval of the Temporary Traffic Control Order. Manager Ridley, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, uh, obviously you've received a lot of public input on this issue. Um, as many of the streets in Mount Pleasant, Preston Street was originally designed to a width that would allow for parking on both sides of the street. And in two thousand two is when concerns were expressed about the safety at the intersections at both Linwood and Greenbrier. And so back in two thousand two is when we looked at putting up some no parking signs to deal with those intersection safety issues. Um, at that point in time though, the discussion was how would property owners feel about eliminating parking on the entire south side? Because there was some thought that maybe property owners would not like that and would like the ability to park in front of their houses. But it seemed to be okay to eliminate it on the whole south side, so that's what was done in two thousand and two. The reason the issue came up again is, as someone indicated, over the years, we've received numerous requests from residents along Greenbrier, um, about concerns with parking along Greenbrier and the congestion that that causes. So as that, those questions came up this year, we said, why is it that we don't allow parking on the south side of Preston? What is the history there? And pulled out the files from two thousand and two and saw what the original intent was back in two thousand and two. So the thinking was, just like all temporary orders, we could try it for ninety days and assess the impact under today's conditions to see how that, um, change may be implemented. And so the temporary order was put in place, the ninety days is up and as with all temporary traffic control orders, it now comes to you for a final decision. Um, you've received the various communications about the concerns with safety along that area. And it is much more congested when cars are parked along there during the event. Um, the recommendation was more so based on the design of the street that was originally intended, the public use of the street and, um, allowing more public parking along that public street. But certainly we could deal with the intersection issues by just leaving the no parking here to corner in place or we could put the no parking signs back in place along the whole south side from Elizabeth to Crepo. Both of those are options available to you this evening. Um, and I think we've crafted motions under both scenarios for you to consider.
Commissioner Kulik?
Move to deny the traffic control order number two, two thousand nineteen, and have the no parking signs reinstalled.
Commissioner Ling? Any discussion? Vice Mayor Gillis?
I will be voting in favor of this as someone who has frequented the tennis courts and parked my car along the north side of Preston. I know when people were looking at Greenbrier and Linwood, deciding to park on that street or deciding to use the parking lots that the high school provides was all a matter of steps. So if they wanted to park on those two streets, two or three back, I have no problem with that. I have done that myself. Other times I have, if there was no par, uh, available parking along the north side of Preston, I u, utilize the parking lots that are not only in the front of the high school, um, at the tech center, but behind, by the football stadium. Um, I have been down there at Preston when both sides of the streets are filled with cars and that is a safety issue. So we should be placing the no parking signs back, um, dealing with the few parkers, the few people that park on Linwood and Greenbrier and encourage people to park in the parking lots provided at the high school.
Commissioner Ling?
I, I'm, I'm, uh, second to this and I'm going to vote, um, to, um, deny the traffic control order, recognizing that parking issues are a headache. There's no two ways about that. Um, I, I drove, over the last couple of weeks, I've dr, driven to the other areas where we've either had people want to have parking, other areas where people don't want to have parking. Uh, it's, it is a very thorny thing to deal with. And I, I can understand why the traffic control committee thought perhaps we could relieve the problem on Greenbrier if we spread out the, the parking. For, what I read suggested it, it didn't do that anyway. And so I, I know from when I was here, that was the original. Nobody had actually ever come and said, how about if we have parking on the south side of Preston? But we did have people come and say, Greenbrier is also a problem. And Greenbrier is a problem, so, you know, it may be that we just need to put a couple of no parking from here to corner anyway on Greenbrier. It is narrower and it is a problem when, when cars are on both sides. But I think what, I live very close to that area, so I've driven down Preston many, many times over this three months. And what I've discovered is, other than when there are sporting events going on, there's no parking on either side of that street, it's almost always empty. And then great for bicycles because it, they essentially become two bike lanes. But it is extremely congested, um, during the sporting events. And so I, eh, eh, have great sympathy with people trying to pull out of their driveway. So I, um, I, um, appreciate the fact that traffic control committee tries to deal with these issues. One of the things in the note was the suggestion that maybe we needed to get together, come up with some parameters because this issue comes up all the time and maybe that's one of the things that we can do. Um, but I just think this area overall is better off with just the parking on the north side of Preston.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? Nay. Motion passes six to one. Do we have announcements on city related issues?
We got number eighteen.
Number eighteen. It's like I was in a rush to go home.
You added a work session.
Number eighteen is Consider Appointments as Recommended by the Appointments Committee. Chairman of the Appointments Committee is Vice Mayor Gillis.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Uh, the Appointments Committee, uh, wants to make a recommendation to the full commission of Desiree Woodworth to Isabella Colony Material Recovery, Recovery Facility, uh, that term expires December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. And also to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Steve Stressman, partial term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Discussion? I'd just like to thank our, um, our applicants for their service to the city and encourage other people to apply for our boards. We have twenty-four boards? All those in favor of approving the appointments, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion passes. Since we have no work session scheduled?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're adjourned.